Good evening and welcome to Monday, December 18th, 2023 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be given by Shirley Murdoch, Member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And then we also have a Spanish version of the invocation provided by Sergio Quintero, Centro Missionario Jesús Cristo a las Nacenyas Church. So if I could ask you to please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father in heaven, we come before thee in the gathering of a city council meeting, and we are so very grateful for the transparency of our council as they make decisions and take actions that the citizenry knows about and can, if they have questions, they can come and ask. We ask thee to bless each member of the council and the staff with the wisdom to meet the needs of the city with valor and integrity. And our dear heavenly Father, at this time of Christmas especially, we pray for those within Independence that do not have a place to live or enough food on their tables, that these needs can be met by agencies or by the citizens. And we also pray for those who choose to disobey the laws, please bless them with a change of heart, that they will choose to adhere to the laws and the that can and the ordinances of the city that will bring peace and blessings into their lives, into their homes, their city, and their country. And dear heavenly Father, we're especially grateful for thee and for thy Son, Jesus Christ, whose birth we celebrate at this Christmas season. We give thee gratitude and our love and devotion in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Bendito Dios y Padre eterno. Venimos delante de tu presencia en este día, Señor, dándote gracias, señor amado, por cada uno, señor, de estos council members, señor. Te pido en el nombre de Jesús, padre, que te manifiestes en sus vidas, padre, que les dé sabiduría, señor, inteligencia, padre, para tomar, señor, las decisiones debidas para esta ciudad, padre. Te pedimos en el nombre de Jesús, señor, que pongas una cobertura, padre amado, sobre sus vidas, padre. También te pedimos, señor, en ese nombre que sobre todo nombre, padre, por aquellos, señor amado, que están pasando por momentos difíciles, señor. Ayúdela, señor, a tomar las decisiones de vida, señor, para que esta ciudad, señor, progrese, señor amado, y para que sea de bendición, padre. Te pido en ese nombre que sobre todo nombre, padre, que en esta ciudad, señor, el crimen baje, señor amado, que tome control usted, señor, de todo lo que está pasando a nuestro alrededor, padre, pero sobre todo, señor, pon sabiduría, señor, pon un ángel alrededor, señor, de aquellos que están en la ley, señor amado, y aquí, señor, representando, señor, a cada uno de estos miembros que se encuentran en este auditorio en este día, señor, yo te pido en ese nombre que sobre que sobre todo nombre, señor, que tu presencia, señor, los sature, señor amado, que les dé la sabiduría para tomar decisiones sabias, señor, sobre este condado, padre. Te pedimos en el nombre de Jesús esa bendición que desciende de lo alto, padre. En el nombre de Jesús oramos, señor amado, por los cuatro extremos, señor, de esta ciudad, señor, en ese nombre que sobre todo nombre, padre, en el nombre de Jesús, señor. Amén, señor, y amén.
Please join me in my pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'd like to move to add a couple of items to that, especially at this time of year when hope is a part, but also when lots of people have a need for more hope in their lives. And I believe this message of hope for Independence is most applicable and one our city would benefit to hear at this time. So that's the first thing. The second thing is to add proclamations that I think a number of proclamations that are in order tonight.
Okay. And I'll tell you what, can we do two motions so we'll make sure we're in agreement with Robert's rules. So the first motion would be to allow Blair Pierce to speak first. So we've got a motion. Do we have a second? And with the council's approval, I just do an aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so Blair will speak first, and then if we can take the second motion and get that out of the way too.
Sure. So that we would, following that, we'd add proclamations to the agenda.
And we'll add proclamations to the agenda. We've got a motion, there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and it is approved. So with that, I want to welcome Blair to the podium, and he did an outstanding job at the prayer breakfast, and so...
Good evening. My name is Blair Pierce, and I'm a fifth grader at Bryant Elementary School. I'm a proud resident of Independence, Missouri. I would like to thank Councilman Jared Fears for asking me to share my essay with all of you this evening. It is an honor to be speaking in front of such an important and a group of community leaders who spent all year helping this city be the best it can be. Bryant Elementary students, like my friends, are lucky because we live uptown right near the square. The courts, the police, our government, and all of the important functions of the city take place right in the heart of the city. Our neighborhood is in the Truman Historic District, which means the path we walk to school follows some pretty important footsteps. For us, Harry Truman's neighborhood is a great place to grow up, and that was the inspiration for my reflections essay. The Reflections Contest is a nationwide contest sponsored by PTA to foster creativity and a love for the arts and students. The Reflections theme this year is "I'm Hopeful Because." The title of my essay is "I'm Hopeful Because I'm From Independence, Missouri," which I will read with you now. "I am hopeful because I'm from Independence, Missouri. It's the town where Harry Truman and his friends and family grew up. After Harry served his terms as president, he could have gone anywhere in the world, yet he chose to come back to his hometown in Independence, to the people and community he loved. The amazing thing is, his hometown is my hometown. Many people will never have a chance to visit a president's hometown. Not only do I share a hometown with a president, I live on the same street as the Truman home, and to live only four houses down from where Harry lived is pretty special. Harry Truman gave everything to make the United States a lovable and safe country. He was a role model for this town. He gave this town a purpose. He showed us how to be leaders and how to be a loving community where people help one another. The reason I'm hopeful is because we can all become like him. I'm going to pay his love forward to people who need it most. My mission is to share my love the same with the world the same way Harry did. My hope is that other people will find and share that same love throughout my community." There was a reason Harry came back to this hometown after he was president. Independence, Missouri isn't just someplace or some town. It's the town, his town, my town. Independence is our town. I am proud that I'm from Independence, Missouri, a town of love and hope. Thank you.
Mr. Pierce, this is kind of like a Simon Cowell moment. I wish that I had the power of a golden buzzer right here, because if I could hit that golden buzzer, you're going to the live rounds, okay? So very, very well done. Excellent job. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Life Saving Awards, and we had just a moment with everyone in the back of the room was involved in the life-saving moment we had in the conference room just right across the hall. But I'll read the proclamation here to give everyone an idea of what occurred. On September 23rd, at approximately 19:21 hours, Patrick Stone called 911 to request medical attention to a scene reported for a man down in Glendale Park. Whereas, Police Officer Daniel Clayton and Police Officer Lacey Gibson responded and found the citizen. Carrie Nickel started performing life-saving measures on Jean Hoppy, who was on the ground and unresponsive. Whereas, Members of the Independence Police Department, Captain Paramedic Charles Stubbs, FEO Barnett Cardin, firefighter Jared Pettendler, and Members of the AMR Team, Paramedic Russ Harmon, EMT Joshua Walker, and Captain Mary Ann Kilgore arrived on the scene and took over in the life, excuse me, performing life-saving measures and transporting Mr. Hoppy to Center Point Hospital. Whereas, Julie Craig and Lori, the children of Jean Hoppy, are extremely grateful that Patrick Stone, Carrie Nickel, and Members of the Independence Police Department, Independence Fire Department, and AMR for their life-saving efforts for their loved one, Jean Hoppy. For without their efforts, the family would not have been able to spend an additional two weeks with him, with Jean, before his passing. So we wanted to recognize all of the Members of that team with a proclamation, so if you could, please come forward and receive the proclamation because of the work you did in that day of helping Jean Hoppy. So please come forward. And next we have citizens' requests, and Janet Young, please come forward, and you have five minutes. Thank you, Janet. Next is Butch Nesbit. Butch, come on up. You've got five minutes, and please state your name and address, please.
Out and spending $20 million on this building, I mean, me as a citizen, I haven't seen any information about it. I don't know if you guys have gotten it behind the scenes. I mean, $20 million, I mean, we could buy, we could build some fire stations, and you guys just want to go ahead and pass this and do this right away. I mean, $20 million, and it looks like you guys are going to pay $1.6 million a year, which comes out to be $32 million after 20 years. But you also, I'm thanking you guys for thinking the GO bond's going to pay for this if we get it approved through the people. Is that correct? I mean, I'm thinking that's what you guys are thinking, but it's right here stated that we're going to pay a principal of 2% if we pay it off early, then 1% if we pay it off early. So that does not make sense. So basically, if the GO bond gets approved, we're going to be paying interest twice on this building to make it go for 20 years. Now, the way I see it, that's a 90,000-square-foot building. The utility center's 47,000 square feet. And to my knowledge, not all of the utility centers use now. Is that correct? Does anybody know? I mean, I don't know. But what I'm saying is, are we planning on moving City Hall over there too? Take it out of the center of Independence? We're going to move City Hall over there to help take up that 90,000-square-foot building? I mean, I just like, there's lots of, lots of questions that I don't have answers. I don't know if you guys got the answers, but I haven't seen any answers in writing anywhere. So I mean, there's, there's quite a few questions here before you guys go spend this money right off the bat. I think you guys should table it for a while, and let's talk about it and have a study session so you can answer some of these questions and get the questions, and that way the people can see why we're going to spend $20 million on this building. The way I see it, what the rate of, and I think I already heard the point that the building's only worth like $5 to $6 million, why don't we just go ahead and buy it outright and then finish up inside? So my knowledge of what I've seen over there, they've been working on that building for the past couple of years. I don't know if it's just facade they were working on, or if they're doing upgrades inside, but I don't know. You guys might know. I haven't seen any answers. Nobody's giving the people any answers or citizens, so I think that's stuff that needs to be talked about and relayed on to the citizens so that we know what's going on instead of going and spending $33 million on a building over 20 years. Like I say, we have fire stations that need to be built. We're talking about the police station. I know we want to move the utility center to get, put the police station out there. So, but there's still, that's a lot of money. I know it costs more to build a new building than it is, so I mean, I'm not saying that's not a bad idea to this, but let's maybe just buy it outright instead of paying the extra interest on it. That's where I'm standing on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Colleen Huff, and Colleen, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members, and Merry Christmas in case I don't see you again before the holiday. The reason why I'm here tonight is I want to talk about this Inglewood Arts Overlay Project, and I just want to say I love the people in the Inglewood Arts Association, and I love the new museum and what they're trying to accomplish, but I'm a little perplexed that they would go in front of the legislatures and ask for millions of dollars and say that they own 4,000 residential homes and 200 vacant properties because they don't. And back in August, when this was brought before the Planning Commission, it was voted down because none of the people who live within Western Independence were notified about this. It was completely voted down by the Planning Commission and taken off the agenda indefinitely. However, last Monday, Inglewood Arts Association stood before the legislatures and were still asking for millions of dollars for this project, and there were city leaders that are sitting before me right now that were participating in that. So I just want to say I live in Western Independence. I was, I've never received any type of postcard. I've never been invited to a town hall so we could talk about this. So, I mean, I do know that we are desperate to find solutions to improve the community. I mean, the square looks great. We're improving the historic sites, but my neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhoods, they look terrible. And the problem with this, I don't know, I mean, just to me, this seems like a backdoor deal. Like, why would they feel empowered to go forward and ask the legislatures for COVID money to move forward on a project that was voted down at the Planning Commission level? I mean, this has never, as far as I know, this hasn't been on an agenda before the City Council yet, so why are our leaders joining them in a meeting to ask for money when they're saying they own 4,000 residential homes and 200 blighted properties when they don't? And additionally, I mean, like I said, I love what they've done with the museum. I am more than open to hear how they can improve Western Independence because we have been neglected for a long time. And I'm ready to, I, when I heard about the GO bond, I got excited. I just, I want to see improvements to our neighborhood, but this isn't going to benefit the people. We're not even going to get new sidewalks. We're not going to get any new overlays to our streets. The only thing it's going to do is change our residential zoning to multi-zoning. So how is that going to help us? So once again, I mean, I'm ready, I think that, I think since they are so excited to move forward and our city leaders are also excited, but the city leaders don't even live in Western Independence that are supporting this, but I think the Inglewood Arts Association should send postcards to all of the residents and, okay, all the residents, and let them know about this, and maybe invite them to a town hall like you had for your Ethics Committee. I mean, I feel like that's only fair because that way we can all ask questions, get the answers we need, and then the people can decide what will happen with their neighborhoods. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. David Babcock. And please state your name and your address, please. And you have five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Babcock, and I live in Kansas City, Missouri at 501 Barnes Avenue. Good evening, Mayor.
If I could, if I could interrupt you just for a second? I didn't notice that earlier, and we actually have to pass, we have to make a motion to allow people that are not residents to speak, so I can have you hold on just one second. That would be great. If I can get a motion from the council to, yes?
A move to suspend the rules and allow non-residents to speak.
Thank you. We've got a motion. Do we have a second? We've got a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, same sign. It passes. Please forgive me for the formality. We've just got to do that, so thank you for the time.
Not at all. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, obviously. My name is David Babcock, and I'm a short-term and midterm rental owner. My Independence home is up for a short-term rental vote this evening. I bought this as a vacant and blighted property and renovated it up to a class property, vastly improving the neighborhood. I just want to state for the record that I'm aware of all the conditions and regulations regarding short-term rentals in Independence. I am currently hosting a longer-term rental renter in the property who was displaced by a flood in their property. They've been there for a few months already and will be there for a few more months. Previous to that, I had it rented out to someone who had a fire in their property, and they needed nine months in the property. I'm complying with all of the terms and regulations, and we have passed all the inspections that have been required. The property has been unanimously approved at the Planning Commission on a previous meeting, and I'm available if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Babcock.
What address?
What address? This is your home address. What's the address for the short-term rental?
The short-term rental is at 12111 East 51st Terrace South.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Janet Evans. Janet, please come forward and please state your name and your address, please. And you have five minutes for your presentation.
Good evening. Janet Evans, 3403 North Delaware, Independence, Missouri, Kentucky Hills, 64050. Mayor Rowland and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening in opposition to Case 23-400-17, Short-Term Rental at 3005 North Union. I'm the President of Kentucky Hills HOA here on behalf of the homeowners in Kentucky Hills. Independence must create expanded first-time homebuyers program funding to assist renters and low-income families in the transition to home ownership. Kentucky Hills is what railtors would call a starter neighborhood. We need more families buying their own homes to occupy. We have a very high percentage of rentals, most not locally owned, such as this property in question. This couple have no prior Airbnb or rental ownership experience, living hours away in Iowa. They stated at Planning Commission this is their very first home ownership. They were unable to tell the Planning Commission how many nights rental they would have in a minimum. A large portion of rentals in Kentucky Hills are sloppily managed. Many wind up languishing, empty, and rotting. Some land in probate court for months or even years. Short-term rentals lessen family opportunity for affordable home ownership. The United States Census states the current population of Independence is just over 122,000 with slightly more than 55,000 single-family homes. 59% are owner-occupied, 41% are rentals. Per various internet rental sites, there are currently between 130 and nearing 200 Airbnb available. How many is enough? Cities lose revenue due to lower taxes for short-term rentals versus those imposed on hotels. Airbnb is emerging as a major driving force of gentrification. The Airbnb effect negatively impacts housing by inflating prices and thus property taxes in the most affordable communities and thwarts single-family purchases by owner-occupied families, thus keeping them from realizing the American dream of home ownership and limits the availability of rentals to families by causing soaring rental prices, exacerbating available affordable housing for all, plus adding to homelessness. Skyrocketing rent and mortgages cause exorbitant cost of living and reduce community cohesion. Boutique accommodations, family-owned businesses, and grocers lose revenue due to lack of full-time families living in all of the limitedly available single-family homes. Airbnb clients want to rent properties with the highest total occupancy, sufficient parking, pools, and spas close to downtown, cultural attractions, fine dining, nightlife, close to event centers, and public transportation, the hallmarks of urban living. Kentucky Hills has none of these to offer. It is beyond worrisome that the last several votes at Planning Commission level for short-term rentals were all in favor, even when the property owners were not local, even with some past code violations, including one that was approved at the November 14th meeting that was in active code violation at the time of the meeting, which was brought to the attention of the commission and approved anyway. Independence is already over capacity of short-term rentals. If the Kansas City Royals move Kaufman Stadium, Independence already stands to lose $7 million a year, according to a recent City Council report. Chain hotels... Chain hotels with empty rooms may pull out of the city, further inhibiting Independence from the ability to house further future major event attendees, losing out on much-needed revenue, causing job loss, and potential astronomical economic damage to Independence. Do you really feel compelled to allow out-of-town investors to come in, pay less revenue to the city than the other accommodations, and bring nothing to the table, especially to the detriment of the existing voting, tax-paying property owners who invested their life savings into purchasing their American dream? Thank you for your time and attention to our concerns.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I make clarification real quick?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware, there are actually, there's two short-term rental applications that are on the agenda this evening. One is for 12111 East 51st Terrace South. The other is for 3005 North Union Street. There were valid legal protests filed with both, on both of these applications, which is why it's coming to you all instead of just stopping at the Planning Commission. And because of the valid legal protest, it requires, approval requires five votes of the council instead of the usual four. So I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
And Ms. Evans, if I can just clarify, which property you were speaking at, because you didn't write that down on the, on the form? Which, which short-term rental were you?
The one in Kentucky Hills, 3005.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next is Mr. Kenneth Love, and if you could please state your name and your address.
Kenneth Love, 16808 East George Franklin Drive. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney. Is the city going to purchase a building that is anticipated to cost $20 million, but your cover sheet says you don't know how it will be paid for? With that, where will the jail be? If IPD moves to the ICU building? Or is IPD planning on keeping the jail at the IPD building that we know of across the street? What if the Go-Bond fails? How will we, the city, pay for the new jail? With that being said, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Love. This brings us to our consent agenda.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the City Manager.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Does anyone want to pull any of the items for consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull 23-800, please.
23-800?
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else want to pull any other items?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
23-799.
That was 23, I'm sorry.
23-799.
Oh, 799? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Item number 20.
Councilmember Fears would like to pull item number 20. Any other items?
Item number 23792.
Anyone else want to pull any other items? Going once, going twice. I'm going to pull 23801 to talk about that just for a second and bring the council up to date. Anything else that would like to be pulled from the agenda? Okay. Let's go ahead and approve the consent agenda minus the items that were polled. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda items.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda items that were not pulled are approved, and I'm just going to go through the way they are staying right here because I didn't follow exactly who was in which position first, so I'll just go with number 20. Councilmember Fears, that item was pulled, and please proceed.
Yes, so I had asked this to be moved from the December 4th meeting and asked staff to take a look at that. I was particularly concerned about the expense for computer technology at the Fire Department because it was so much higher than other departments. They, staff has taken a look at that. It's been reduced substantially. I just wanted to express my appreciation to staff. It's, it's, I think it's decreased about $60,000, which is significant on this particular one, and did, and not to the detriment of our fire service at all. So I appreciate that, and with that, I make a motion to approve item number 20.
We have a motion to approve item number 20. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second to approve item number 20. Other further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and item number 20 is approved. Six in favor, zero opposed. The next item that was polled was 23792. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you. To inquire of the City Manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you please just give an overview of 23792?
I would be glad to, and thank you for the opportunity. This item, if approved by the council, would add the city's emergency dispatchers and the detention personnel that work in our police department to what's known as our public safety employees for purposes of the city's retirement plan. Under the state system that the city is a member of, commonly referred to as loggers, public safety personnel, which right now includes police and fire members, are eligible for retirement at age 55. This item, again, if approved, will add the emergency dispatchers and the detention personnel to that. That's more than just, you know, a nice thing to do. Several of our peer cities around this, us, have that benefit, and rightfully so. Many of our former employees have taken advantage of that opportunity and hired on to similar positions in those surrounding communities. So this is going to help us immensely with recruitment and retention of personnel in those vital functions.
Thank you very much. I know that our 911 staff work really hard, and not that we would accuse any of our local cities of poaching them, but being able to keep that talented personnel pool is really important. I appreciate that we've made some new hires, and I think this will go a long way to keeping that as a talented staff pool. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on 23792? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Rowland? Mayor Rowland, sorry.
It's perfectly fine. I, yes, and item number 23792 passes six in favor and zero opposed. Councilmember Hobart, you wanted to pull 23799. The floor is yours.
Thank you. This property is in my district, and while I appreciate that the owner came to speak in person tonight, I've not only spoken to the folks that came in person from the 4th District to protest this, I've heard and spoken to a number of others in the 4th District that are opposed to this, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else? Further discussion? Councilmember, would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve.
There is a motion to approve 23799.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve 23799. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
No.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. 23799 fails passage. That brings us to 2380. Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am opposed to this resolution, 23-800, approving a short-term rental. I've worked quite extensively over the years with the members of Kentucky Hills, stabilizing that neighborhood, working with them to get Kentucky Hills onto the road that they are on. I would like to continue that progress. That's why I will be voting no on this motion.
Okay.
This resolution. I will make a motion for approval.
Thank you. We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion on 23800. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
No.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. 23800 fails, zero in favor, six opposed. That brings us to 23801, and with the indulgence of the council, could I just use a couple of props to make a point? Is that, is that not, is that not allowed? Not allowed? Okay. So we'll proceed. But I had really great, I had, don't do it, all right. With that being said, on behalf of the Tourism Commission, I've asked the city council to endorse an idea for a, a video contest for this indefinitely, and we're going to look for a different sponsor for the event for a whole host of reasons. But with that being said, that's the motion I'm going to be making, and, and if you'd like to stay after the council meeting, I'd be happy to show you my props. So.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
No.
Any further discussion? All right. Not seeing any further discussion. Madam City Clerk, we have a motion in the floor on 23801 to table indefinitely, and if you could, please call the roll on that.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and 23801 is postponed indefinitely, six in favor, zero opposed. That'll bring us to our regular agenda, and Madam City Clerk, if you could read 23114, please.
23114, second reading, and ordinance amending Independence City Code, Section 5.01.018, license denial, suspension, or revocation, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 23114?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire of the City Manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, could you explain how this gives you some additional tools in the work that you need to do?
I'd be glad to. Right now, under City Code, all businesses operating in the city are required to secure a business license for the privilege of doing business in our city. Sometimes businesses run afoul of certain city codes, different policies and procedures. Right now, the only consequence for that and the only tool that the city can administer is to suspend or revoke a business license. There have been times where we feel like that is an overly punitive measure, but some, you know, consequences needed to reinforce the rules of the city and ensure compliance with them. If this item is approved, this will give the City Manager and by authority, city staff, the ability to impose fines, which would then be able to send a message about compliance with the various provisions of code without going to something that's going to be detrimental to the business's ability to operate, like suspension or revocation of that license.
Thank you. I appreciate you trying to have a broader toolbox so that we can both comply with regulations but encourage people to do business in the city. For that reason, I'll be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 23114? Seeing no further discussion on 23114. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Pardon me. 23114 is approved, six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 23115. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
23115, second reading, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract to Black &amp; McDonald in the amount of $880,886.55 for 24 highway improvement steel pole installation and making necessary appropriations, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 23115?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire of the City Manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, I am such a fan of the work going on on 24 Highway. I think most people who've driven along there have seen that there's great amounts of construction and repair and roadwork. It's such an important project. Can you give just a small overview so that people remember what is going on along that corridor when they're grumpy at a stoplight because there's construction in their way? Thank you.
Yes, so this project is being delivered in three different phases. Significant efforts on behalf of city staff and certainly strong advocacy from members of the city council helped us land and secure multimillion-dollar grants to complete this project. So very broad, but in totality, this project is going to add different safety measures for both vehicular and pedestrian safety in that area, improve the lighting, which will certainly help with safety and security features as well. In, in certain areas like the Fairmont neighborhood, this will re-align and redesign the road to provide a more aesthetically pleasing and safe experience for the commercial corridor through there. There are going to be stormwater improvements so that flooding of different properties and businesses is better controlled. So all the way around, this project could really be summed up as both safety enhancements as well as doing some infrastructure improvements that we hope and believe will spur additional economic development in the area.
And this is a project done in partnership with MoDOT, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 23115? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Perkins, I'm sorry, Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23115 passes six in favor and zero opposed. That brings us to 23116. Madam City Clerk?
23116, second reading, and ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19453, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 23116? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and 23116 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 23117.
23117, second reading, and emergency ordinance authorizing purchase orders and a 10-year contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for body-worn cameras, in-car video equipment, tasers, records management software, and other products and services for the police department. The initial year outlay would be $1,456,654.96. The annual cost for additional years would be $1,215,870.81. The total for all 10 years would be $12,399,492.25, second reading.
And Mr. Kovar, just to verify this, should we go through the trouble of doing the first reading here since it's an emergency? It would be the exact same thing, but?
Yes.
We need to do that?
Yep.
All right. So we've done the second reading, and that's the way it is ordered, but we need to do the first reading because it is an emergency, if I'm hearing Mr. Kovar right. Thank you very much. So, yep.
All right. 23117, first reading, an emergency. 23-117, first reading, and emergency ordinance authorizing purchase orders and a 10-year contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for body-worn cameras, in-car video equipment, tasers, records management software, and other products and services for the police department. The initial year outlay would be $1,456,654.96. The annual cost for additional years would be $1,215,870.81. The total for all 10 years would be $12,399,492.25, first reading.
Thank you. So the floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you give an overview of this contract? And while I know, just for the record, can you explain why we need to make this an emergency reading?
I would be glad to. As the council knows from one of your recent study sessions, the police department was able to secure a federal grant for body-worn cameras, helps defray some of the initial outlay costs associated with both the equipment as well as the personnel necessary to implement and administer that technology. In exploring, then, you know, the technology that would most suit the city's needs, our police department staff began to realize that this company, Axon, has really advanced in police technology and the ability to meet several of our departmental needs. So through really shrewd negotiations and certainly strong financial stewardship, we are able to address some of our older technology that needs to be modernized, things like tasers, things like the in-car dash cameras, of course, the body-worn cameras, and then some of the records management equipment that's so central to the work of the police department and certainly the records staff within that department. Because of the vendor's timing on this, we are asking for the council to approve this as an emergency. So they are willing, and this has been negotiated, to give the city a significant decrease in the overall pricing of the contract if we are able to get approval of that item this evening. So that being that this is our last meeting of the year, of the calendar year, that's why we were seeking the emergency approval. Had we waited for the traditional two readings, we would have been into the new calendar year, and the discount that was negotiated would no longer apply.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 23-117?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Request some information from the city manager.
Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, so the annual cost will be around 1.2 million for this. How much of that is more than what we would have been paying otherwise? So I'm trying to get a sense for, you know, kind of what the additional amount that we would, you know, because we're instituting through this process a body cam program, so trying to get a sense for that.
Yeah, I might ask the chief of police to come forward and help me with that specific question.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor and council. Adam Dustman, chief of police. The short answer to your question, councilman, is about $600,000 to $800,000. So we have offsets in our end-of-use or end-of-life for the L3 technology that we use at vendor now for the dash cam, as well as reproducing that technology for interviews and other things that we do. So we'll be able to transfer those funds, as well as the funds that we have for internal affairs software and duplicative processing that we'll be able to capture. So we'll, anywhere between about $600,000 and $800,000 additional funding on top of our redundant funding that we have now.
Okay, okay. Well, so I just want to tell the council, you know, my perspective on this. I'm, you know, supportive of the body cam program. I think it's a good idea. You know, it's certainly something that the police have been asking for for quite some time. And so, you know, I think I'm supportive of that. But I am want to be cautionary from the standpoint of by doing this, we are essentially creating an unfunded liability that is going to be a 10-year, you know, commitment for the city, which may mean, there could come a day at some point that we're unable to fund other needs for this. And so while I'm supportive of this and supportive of the cost to do this, I just want to, you know, say that, you know, I do recognize that, you know, there's only so much money to go around, and there could come a day when, you know, we'll have to say no to something else because we're committed to this. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion on 23-117. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 23-117 passes six in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to first readings, and you can go ahead and start with 23-118.
23-118, first reading, and ordinance approving a final plat for the Hub Shopping Center in Independence, Missouri, first reading. 23-119, first reading, and ordinance amending Section 13.01.005 of the city code pertaining to park restroom security and loitering on park property, first reading. 23-120, first reading, and ordinance amending Section 5 of the city code to create a new Article 21 pertaining to feeding operations on park property. This item addresses item 3.1 in the 2000, I'm sorry, 3.1K in the 2023-2024 Independence Action Plan.
Please proceed.
On this item, 23-120, I do have an amendment that I want to let the council know. After discussion with the city manager and legal folks, have an amendment to add on C1 of this ordinance, "or at private celebratory events, including but not limited to birthday and graduation parties, or." So I want to bring that up now so that we can publish it in the next agenda, you know, as amended.
But hold on. If we do that, we actually have to make a vote on the amendment now in order to add it on? And I'm not sure if our rules allow us to add an amendment now or not in order to publish it that way. That's what I'm reading, but give me your thoughts.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and make the amendment now, you could do that, and it would be amended for the agenda for the second reading.
So it will show, it would show an amended version?
It would show, if you approved Councilmember Fears' amendment, that would show up instead of the version that's there right now
Correct.
On the next agenda for the second reading. Yes, sir.
And from your perspective as a policy, we could, in fact, if Mr. Fears wanted to do that, make a motion, get a second. If he gets a motion and a second's approved, then we can actually amend the item then at that point.
You could amend the, yeah. If you wanted it to show up as proposed on the next agenda, yes, you could do that at this meeting. If you didn't, if you wanted to wait on the amendment, then it would stay as it is right now and could still be amended at the next meeting, either way.
Councilmember, please proceed.
I'd like to go ahead and make that amendment. If I get a second, I'll explain a little more about what I...
We've got a motion for his amendment to be added to 23-120. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the amendment, 23-120. Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
So the purpose of this amendment is because we're adding, you know, some restrictions relative to feeding events, and, but, as I talked with staff, it became apparent that it doesn't really say that we could, you know, have birthday party events or, you know, graduation parties or other similar kind of things in park property without that potentially running afoul of this feeding event language. So by adding this, you know, it allows us to have those kinds of events and not run into problems. I just didn't want anybody to be hassled by, you know, having a birthday party at a park, you know, shelter house, and all of a sudden, they didn't have the right fees, you know, or right requirements. And so that's the purpose of this.
Any further discussion on this amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment. We've got a motion and a second to... Excuse me. We've got a motion and a second to amend 23-120 with the amendment from Councilmember Fears. Seeing no further discussion, I would ask the city clerk to take role on 23-120 and add an amendment so it'll be in the records when we have the second reading and for the next meeting. But this will not make the final approval. This is just adding this amendment now. We'll have a second reading on item 23-120 in the future.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23-120 is amended, and that is our first reading. We'll have the second reading on January the 2nd. Madam City Clerk, please read 23...
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I actually had, I want to discuss 23-121. I'm not sure, do I do that after she does the first reading?
Yeah, if you could get my attention right after that, let her read that, and we'll get your attention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
23-121, first reading, and ordinance authorizing the city of Independence, Missouri, to enter into a lease-purchase transaction and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I know it's unusual, but I wanted to have some discussion on this
Sure.
Because I believe it's a pretty important topic. And we had some citizen speakers earlier that asked some good questions. I was going to ask these anyway, and they actually brought up some of the ones that I wanted. So, Mr. City Manager, how much are we actually going to pay for the building itself? Are the... And not, I know we're asking for 20 million, but how much is the building going to cost itself?
Certainly. So in order to maybe help the flow of conversation, I've got the individuals behind me who have been working on the negotiations and the financing of this. So I'll ask the deputy city manager to come forward and help answer your questions. And then we also have the city's financial advisor, as well as the team that's been working on the financing for this project here to help answer some of those questions.
Okay, thank you. How much is the building, the actual building, going to cost?
Currently, the purchase price is 9.15 million.
9.15. So we're asking to do, you're asking us to do a loan of $20 million. Are we overestimating what we think it's going to cost to do what we need to do to that building?
Currently, that's, you know, our best budget projection. Certainly, if it comes in under that amount, we can request that the bank, you know, reduce that, prepay that principal, or we can use it for another purpose.
Okay. So right now, the only thing I've heard, I think, is that the people from the utility center are going to go in there. And the fiscal impact, it states that the purchase agreement will be based on the department occupancy and the building costs associated with it. Do we know what other, I mean, the citizen speaker brought it up, that building's a lot bigger than current IUC is. Do we know what other departments may be moving in there? Because I would like to have an idea of how much money IPL is actually going to be paying towards this.
Right now, the only determination that we have made is Independence Power and Light, and then the three departments constituting municipal services. So water, sewer, and what was formerly known as Public Works. Of course, WPC was sewer and stormwater. So those operations would pay for their portion of the square footage that they would occupy within that building. The reason we don't have those exact dollar amounts listed on your cover sheet is we just haven't yet sized out how much square footage those departments will take up. But however much they take up is how much their fund will owe in there. The motivator for suggesting the lease purchase for this building is the police construction costs have tripled in the last five years. Our estimate in 2018 was $32 million. The estimates we're receiving now are $120 million. We've heard often from this council and our citizens, and rightfully so, don't waste money, be financially responsible. So instead of building a $120 million building, we are seeking to outlay total acquisition and site improvements, $20 million, to relocate our utilities functions, and then address the police, not in totality, but partially with that 45,000 square feet that's at the utility center right now, and then asking our voters eventually, if the council approves this, to support the rest of the construction costs for the rest of the police needs. That's about an $80 million difference between those two plans. What goes on with the rest of the space? I know we all want answers. Right now, we don't specifically have answers for that. We are prioritizing trying to get the severe deficiencies with our police department addressed as soon as possible. So I recognize that that's not usually an adequate answer, but that is wholly and truly where we are at right now.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of more questions. So currently, the city, well, I say the city, Independence Power and Light owns the building off of 23rd Street in Hardy Mize. And some of the land surrounding, although I believe the city owns some land as well. How will the city, or how will Independence Power and Light be reimbursed for that building and the land?
It will be my recommendation to the council, and of course, this will have to be approved, but any space, so that building that sits there today in any land, would be paid for out of the fund that would be using that. So whatever resources are paying for acquisition and construction of the police functions would reimburse the utilities for their costs that they invested in acquisition and construction of the old hospital site. We have a track record for that with the 911 emergency dispatch function. So when we built that project, the public safety sales taxes paid for the land to the utilities where that site was then built for the dispatch center.
Okay, okay. So let's say this passes at the next meeting. We move the IUC people down to the new building, the Gihah, whole Gihah building. We start moving the police department over to 23rd Street. I don't, we're not going to have a jail over there. The jail is still going to stay across the street from what I understand its current location. My concern is, I like the idea in theory, then we're going to be separating the police department. What is the backup plan if the GeoBond fails?
So right now, let me back up to one other important step that's in there. The city is in the process right now of evaluating six responses that were submitted for what we're calling the Justice Center Master Plan and Space Analysis. So we're going through a competitive process, reviewing the vendor proposals that were submitted. Eventually, once that is complete and staff has their recommendation, as always, we'll bring that to council for your consideration and approval. The deliverable with that project is to answer a lot of those questions that you're posing, Councilmember Stewart. What functions could fit within the existing utility center space? What other functions, then, would need to be built there at the utility center site? How do we best take advantage of the land to lay out those facilities and buildings in such a way that it works best for the police department? It is then our plan from that to recommend that part of the general obligation bond include funding for the police department. If the bond were to fail, I think we have to go right back to the drawing board to figure out what we are going to do to get our police personnel out of the inadequate working conditions that I know the council knows all too well right now.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Since we're on the topic, a couple of other questions. The building...
The building that we're talking about, citizen mentioned they'd been doing construction. They did a full redo, refresh of that building, and do I understand that correctly?
There was a renovation completed in 2020.
2020. You're really hard to hear.
There was a renovation completed in 2020.
Okay. And that building, it's, it's not just the building we're buying. It already has IT set up in it, and we're built, we're getting it with furniture, fixtures, equipment. Is that fair?
There will be some retrofitting and equipping that we need to do to that building, including technology, you know, upgrades and replacements, and some FFNE purchases. We need to extend fiber, our fiber ring, to that facility and have two, two points of entry to ensure that we have continuity of operations. There's some other improvements that we need to make to the building as well.
And in the world we live in now, government buildings need some safety features. I know that must be part of your up to 20 million dollars that, that we have baked into this, correct?
Correct.
And, and the approval that we're giving you, are we giving you an up to 20 million dollars or 20 million dollars? And the reason is, if your costs don't reach that point, you don't necessarily have to borrow the full amount. Is that correct?
So, if, if, you know, we'll certainly work to keep it under, you know, to manage this in the most efficient manner possible while also delivering a lasting facility that, you know, will be here for, and sustain our operations. In the event, you know, we're under that 20 million dollars, there's two options. One is, you know, prepay that money back to the bank if they, you ask the bank if we can prepay the funds. The second option is to use it for, you request to use it for another use. As you know, in the CIP, there's a municipal operations center that is supposed to be funded for the next three years. That's certainly a use of that. We certainly don't have, we don't want, have a want for any other kind of facility needs. There's plenty to, plenty out there.
And is there any rough timeline? And, I mean, we won't hold you to this, but I think people are trying to figure out, is this happening in the next one year, next three years, just for...
So, for construction estimating, you have to think that for every month that we don't start construction, that's approximately a half a percent in inflation. So, time is literally money. Our goal would be if we are able to close on this transaction, following the second reading in January, we'd begin design immediately and go through the construction process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Since we're asking questions, I'll get on board. So, I don't know, Mr. Walker, Mr. Norris, I don't know who wants to answer this, but... So, you know, I, I read it as well as it was an up to 20 million, not a flat 20 million necessarily. It's kind of, would it be fair to characterize it as, you know, like a home equity line of credit that you could go up to that amount? Is that a fair assessment or not?
No, that's, that's not a fair assessment. Like, like I said, if, if we, if we manage the project under that amount, there, there are two options. One is we prepay the principal, which reduces the amount we, you know, we owe. Or the section, second option is to, you know, request that we use it for another purpose.
Okay. And then, on the, on the 20 million, that includes interest payments as well, is that correct?
So, the, the annual debt service is 1.6 million.
Right, for...
Over 20 years.
20 years, okay.
It's 5.18% interest rate. I'm going off of memory on my sheet there, but I think that's about right.
Okay.
And then, we can refinance that. I think it starts in 2030, as I noted on that sheet. So, at the beginning then, we can refinance if interest rates are lower than they are right now.
I've read all that, but I wanna go back and read it again before the next session. But, um, okay, let's see, what else was I thinking? Oh, Mr. Walker, could you just talk a little bit about cost per square foot to build versus cost per square foot to buy this particular facility? And kinda, I mean, to help people have a, a little better sense of that.
Right. So, we, we have talked with several of the different municipalities that are currently in the process of building a justice center right now. Two of the preeminent ones are City of Green Valley and the City of Lenexa, Kansas. Building a police station is a lot different than, of course, than building a home or even building an office or a commercial property. It has nuances and needs that are unique and special to that kind of function. The current estimate for a justice center construction is 651 dollars a square foot. And again, that is based on largely those two municipalities and what they are paying for the construction of their facilities. In all probability, that is probably a little bit higher now because they negotiated their contract some time ago. And as we know, you know, inflation has only driven those prices higher. With the 20 million dollar lease acquisition that's being contemplated, if you were to divide that out over the square footage, that is 210 dollars a square foot, both for acquisition and then, all of the tenant improvements that need to be made to make the building both secure and functional as a governmental use. So, somewhere around three times less than what the, the raw construction costs would be.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I had today. I'll have more.
Next time. Okay. Anyone else? Other further discussion? Okay, that brings us to Councilmember Comments. Or, and... So, it brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just can't let this go unstated. Under citizens' comments, there was a speaker who got up and spoke regarding myself and Councilwoman McCandless being at the Jackson County Legislature. And also, some statements that were made regarding Inglewood and Inglewood Arts overlay. So, the speaker mentioned several things that are just factually untrue. So, let's start with Inglewood Arts. Inglewood Arts has been working on an overlay program for several years now. Been working very intimately with them, working with them to help strategize, discuss, and facilitate informational meetings. The planning commission did not vote the overlay down. They postponed it indefinitely. It was not voted down, which means they... Mr. Mayor? Thank you. As I was saying, the, they were postponed indefinitely.
Can we maintain order, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the discussion point of not having community meetings and not having public engagements, not true. So, they have worked with... Mr. Mayor, can we have decorum in the council chambers, please?
Can we get control of the chamber? Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we did have community meetings. We had over several week, or at least one week period, that we had several community engagement meetings over several time slots going through the weekday into the weekend. There was over 4,000 mailers mailed at their financial responsibility that were addressed to over 4,000 individuals or property owners within the district. Mr. Mayor, can you?
Let's please maintain order in the building.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, with, also with that said, I'm still trying to figure out the museum that was referenced. I'm not sure of a museum that is in Inglewood, other than the Pupatory Arts. Regarding the legislative agenda that Councilwoman McCandless and I attended, we attended because we are advocating for the City of Independence. We are advocating for the city as a councilwoman who's a at-large person, and I'm a district person. The City of Independence and the community partners actually had a great representation there, even though the Jackson County Legislature had moved the, their proposals to this Monday, which I was not able to attend, so I'm not sure exactly what took place. There was a total of 6.8 million dollars that was being considered that would have gone to Inglewood Arts, the Northwest CDC, Truman Habitat, City of Independence, Independence Health and Animal Services, Hope House, Drum Farm, Job One. So, we were there not only to advocate for the City of Independence, we were also there to advocate for the partners, which most of them are in my district, too. It was also suggested that the two of us do not live in Northwest Independence, which Ms. McCandless does not. However, by definition, representing the first district, I do live in the Northwest Independence. So, apologize for the choppiness, wasn't really ready for the disruption in the council chambers. So, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fears?
Just would mention that there'd been a number of Christmas activities and other activities, fire retirees, other things going on here the last few weeks. But it's been a busy time, and, you know, I just want to again, comment on Mr. Pierce's essay that he gave and shared with us earlier. What a, a great opportunity to hear from a very young person in our, in our community that really, you know, did speak to the hope for the City of Independence. And, and there's lots of reasons to have hope this time of year. And certainly, you know, he lifted up several, and I, I appreciated that. Other than that, I just wanna say Merry Christmas to our citizens, our staff, my colleagues, and hope everyone has a great holiday.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman McCandless?
Well, I am excited that Independence Together got the funding to be able to extend their fantastic trash pickup program for another year. Multiple different organizations came forward with money, and it just gladdens my heart because that has just done such a nice job of cleaning up the city and helping, helping people move from homelessness into permanent shelter. So, it's a win on multiple levels. The second item is I wanna call out Pioneer Ridge Middle School, who got acknowledged and made it to the Battle of the Brains Final 20 from Burns and Mack, who designs an X science experiment for Union Station. So, congratulations to them. Special thank you to all the folks who put on the holiday luncheon for our employees. Phenomenally well-attended, good barbecue. It was a wonderful time. I hope our employees know how much we appreciate what they do every day to keep the city running. That's a small acknowledgement, but it was a good lunch. And then, just to let folks know, Blue Ridge Boulevard Bridge is going to have its ribbon cutting on the 19th at 10:00 a.m. Governor Parsons is coming to Independence to cut the ribbon. That is the last of the 250 bridge project that they've done across the state of Missouri. Of course, they save the best for last. So, public is invited to come if you would like to. And then, Mr. City Manager, if you could just talk about the road tech advancements that, that Municipal Services is making, I'd appreciate people understanding that better.
Yeah, our Municipal Services Department, which part of their scope is the treatment of the roads during winter weather events, they have identified and implemented a new technology that is going to allow them to better monitor, plan, prepare for, and execute the city's response to those winter weather events. So, part of the technology is going to make them slightly better than amateur meteorologists. So, they will be able to understand what the storm systems are looking like, what times they are expected to hit, how much would be produced, really kinda give them a sense of when do we need to have our crews come in, and how many of those folks do we need to have come in. The importance of that, of course, being, as much as I wish, these storm events don't hit between 8:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday, so they often necessitate an after-hours overtime response. We're certainly glad to have our employees there to do that, but we do try to contain the cost as best we can. And this technology is going to allow us to better plan and prepare for that. Then, once the crews are out on the street, this technology provides real-time data about the condition of the streets and kinda takes away the guesswork. So, instead of trying to decide, should we be plowing? Should we be dropping some kind of treatment, salt, chemicals, whatever it might be? This will provide that feedback of what's going to be the most effective mechanism to get those roads passable and safe for everybody to be out and about, again, saving the city tremendously on our budget so we don't utilize materials that we don't need or wouldn't be effective given that particular storm system.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hobart?
That bridge is in the fourth district, by the way. So, we're clear. Couple of things. On the flip side, Councilmember Fears, the holidays can also be a hard time for folks. So, it's a good time to remember that Missouri does now have 988 as an emergency number for folks that are experiencing a mental health crisis, keeping an eye on family and friends. And for folks out there that struggle with that generally, keep an eye on yourselves. Holidays are particularly hard. So, I like to say that once a year at least, and, and it's all right. Also, in an, in an unusual procedural instance, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to make, which is, is odd, but on a matter of real estate. I would move to go into executive session. This is permitted because we do have the standing notice on our agenda.
Okay.
So, I need a second and...
Second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go into executive meeting after the remainder of the comments.
And, but before we adjourn the meeting.
But before we adjourn the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. Covert, can you?
Yes, sir.
Give a legal opinion on what was just, is this permitted?
Yes, this is permitted. In fact, I mean, our typical process is we set up executive sessions prior to council meetings as a separate meeting, but we always have certain, the, the most commonly used exceptions that allow for executive session, we always have on the regular agenda to allow you all the, the option, if needed, to go into executive session, whether that's during the meeting or after the meeting. So, it's not something that, that, that we need to use very often, but that's exactly why it's on the agenda, is to allow for this situation if you all wanna use it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to go into executive session after Councilmember Comments and after the city manager's comments. If there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the motion to go into executive session immediately after all of the comments passes 6 to 0. But this meeting will not be adjourned at that point. We will, in fact, come back after executive session to officially adjourn the meeting. With that being said, Councilmember Hobart, do you have anything else to say? Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I want to second Councilmember McCandless's comments about Independence Together. I cannot tell you the number of positive comments I get on that, and I am so grateful that you worked diligently on that and to make that happen, so thank you. On Saturday, we had wreaths across America, and so we laid wreaths at the cemetery. And it was incredible. We had about 400 wreaths available. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Perry, who manages the cemetery. And the reason I wanna give him a shout out is, I could tell he was passionate about it, and I... and I, so I asked him, I said, "What's your passion?" And he says, "My father is buried here. He succumbed to Agent Orange from his service in the military, and he works very hard to make sure that this is a very, very respectful place for people to pay their respects to their loved ones." So Perry, I want to give you a shout-out for that. I've also got a couple of other comments, but we do have a dog video, and I want to give a shout-out to Meg and her team, and also the shelter folks. They've been doing dog videos, and all of the dogs except one, and we're going to see that dog put into the video here, so there's Nitro and Gregory is in this video. So, Meg, if it's queued up, you can go ahead and play. We won't play the whole thing, it's a minute twenty, but we'll just play a bit, so you can get a chance to see Gregory, who needs a home. And Nitro is being shown right there, and Nitro has been adopted, so with that, and not to, and take everyone's time, but I just want to give a shout-out to both the shelter folks and the communication folks for doing that. I think it's marvelous, and I cannot say thank you enough, so we'll get Gregory a home. Also, just want to give a shout-out to Kim Osborne and the team who did a great job on the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. The success of the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast was not my fault. They did an extraordinary job, and I take no responsibility for it whatsoever. They did just an extraordinary job, they planned everything, and I just cannot give them enough, enough kudos for everything that they did, so they just did a great job. So, with that, Mr. City Manager, any closing comments to wrap up before we go into executive session?
Yes, I would like to share just a few updates for the general benefit. Our team has been hard at work implementing a new customer service phone system for the utilities. This past Tuesday, one of the more prominent features fully went live, and that is a callback feature. So, in the past, folks probably have experienced, you call, you're put on hold, you have to wait. Now, you'll be able to enter your phone number and be called back in order of when your call was received. So if you hang up, it doesn't lose your place in line, our staff will call you back just as soon as you're up next, so we're excited about that. In November of 2021, the voters of this community approved an expansion of the fire sales tax. Part of that funds some much-needed attention to our fire stations, and I want everybody to know that continues to move forward. A request for qualifications for design services is going to be issued the first week of January, so that will be the next phase towards addressing the deficiencies with our fire stations. And speaking of our fire department, we've certainly enjoyed and benefited from working with Chief Loss as our interim fire chief, but he does eventually want to go back home, so we will launch our national nationwide recruitment for the next fire chief right after the New Year. That was the recommendation of our recruiter. This time of year being busy with holiday travels and such, we think we'll get a much better response rate. And finally, just letting folks know, things are staying alive. The part of the IPL review that's focused on the business plan and strategic plan associated with retention of the utility, several of us from my office participated in a call with the consultant last Monday, asking a lot of questions about the business operations and getting some good baseline data. DKMT, who's of course operating both sides of that study, remains on track to hit their contractual obligation of July 2024 to have both reports finished and presented publicly to the council. That concludes my updates. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, and with no other comments, we will address or go into conference room right across the hall for executive session. Once that is concluded, we'll come back and actually adjourn the meeting. Are we good to go? All right. No further discussion. This, the general meeting or the regular meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Okay.